I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And before we get started with anything, I am going to, um, we have invited some students from the elementary school here today to be a part of our Georgia City Speak. And, uh, these are kids who may or may not be really interested in government, but they're interested in being here tonight. So we're going to go ahead and invite up right now Tanner, Village, and Garrett. And we're going to give them our big chairs if they want it, the fancy chairs.
No, I told you.
Right. Oh, my. No, I told you. Right there. Okay. Here we need another person. All right. You have my business, please.
Yeah.
It's always nice when you have kids from the elementary school who are interested enough to come and be a part of this. We will ask them if they have any questions or any comments, and we will kind of talk through what we're doing during the whole meeting so that they can learn a little bit about what happens during city business up here. With that being said, welcome gentlemen. And gentlemen, and we're going to go ahead and start with the invocation. And Abe, would you be willing to do the invocation for us tonight?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. And then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Dear God, thank you for your sacrifice on the cross for all of your sins. And we ask you to bless, to, uh, to, you bless this meeting of city council as they make decisions on the impact of the city. We also ask that you bless the students here tonight as they take part in the meeting. And finally, Lord, please bless and protect all of Wallo Grove. All of the students we asked to be sustained. Amen.
Amen. Can we do some Pledge of Allegiance?
Uh.
I pledge allegiance to the Father. To the Son. And to the Holy Spirit. One nation under God, and with this one. Thank you. And thank you, Abe. Very nice. We're going to go ahead and roll call. We have everybody here from Council Plus Three, so we're all here. And we're going to go ahead and start with the public hearing. And I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and we're going to ask Mr. Walter to come up and tell us a little bit about what the variance request is for. And I'm going to go ahead and preface this a little bit, and guys, to tell me, we have a building and a, uh, the Church at the Grove, they want to build a very big building, a new church. And some of the look of the building doesn't exactly match what the architectural guidelines that have been set for the city are. So when somebody asks that, they have to come to Council and ask for a variance. And they have two specific architectural details that they're asking us to consider allowing instead of just what we can't allow in the past. And so Mr. Walter is our Planning and Zoning Administrator, and he's going to tell us a little bit about what their variance request is. He's also going to fill us in on what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends for the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you all again. For the Goodman President, my name is Joe Walter. I am, uh, acting as a zoning administrator for the city of Wallo Grove. And I live in a small town myself, a couple hours from here, and I have two boys, they're a little bit older. And they have gone to many government meetings with me and sit behind the podium and are sitting behind the desk. So they're, they've, they really got to enjoy local government. But the reason we're here tonight for this public hearing is that the SBC Construction Group, which is acting on behalf of Church at the Grove, is asked for a variance from two elements of the architectural design requirements, uh, what's called a downtown overlay district, which is a special set of requirements for the area over by Wallo Grove Parkway, if y'all are familiar with that, or the roundabout, the little roundabout. So, and it is over the, this Rachel was going to, you know, she's technical issue.
Yes, sorry.
So, so the, the plans that they prepared have been through review, the design plans and the building plans, and then two areas where they want to vary from the requirements. One, which is a use of metal, uh, building panels, exterior metal panels, because the ordinance doesn't currently allow that except in certain circumstances, um, which is, uh, so that's one variance. So they want to use, and the council, by the way, had seen the design of it, had looked at this many times, have gone through a lot of discussions about colors and feel and that. So that's one variance. The second variance is to be able to, um, do windows on the front of the building that go all the way to the slab, because the requirement now is that the windows in this particular district have to stop at say three feet or so, because it looks like an older building. Older buildings had, um, didn't have glass all the way to the ground. So they prepared an application, they submitted it for consideration. Um, I did a staff report, which, um, I was presented to the planning commission, and hopefully you have that in your packets. Um, and the planning commission met last Thursday, the 17th, and had some good discussion, and then recommended to the council that even sort of approval of the variance. I can go in more detail, Mayor, or I could just reserve time for questions. I do not see the representative here, although you've seen their presentation numerous times. So nothing has changed from the samples of the, the metal pieces and the, uh, that you've presented. So I went through the criteria and then looked at the, the, in our opinion, the granting of this variance wouldn't impair, wouldn't give them any other special privileges or impair the, the local feel of the district. And then a lot of the church design that they proposed is in keeping with a lot of modern contemporary church design. And, uh, I didn't, we didn't think it would cause, um, would be a substantial detriment to the public view, is how I phrase it. Um, but every other element, best of mine, I'll have major criteria, uh, so.
And one of the things to keep in mind is the metal exterior that they're using for the building. Um, there's metal on one side and metal on the other, and there's insulated foam on the inside. It's not only, um, less expensive to build, which when you're dealing with churches, you always want, you can consider it, but it's also better for the earth. It's greener. So that's another reason that they requested. Um, I'll go ahead and ask if anybody, thank you, Joe, if anybody at this time has, would like to come up with and speak against the idea of accepting or approving the variance request. Sometimes somebody's in the audience and they don't like the idea of approving variance request. So nobody wants to stand there, say their name or, and their address, and then they'll speak for a few minutes about why they don't want something, but we, we haven't anybody like that. So is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the variance request? Yes, for folks who want, we have a grant that request, okay? Okay, with that being said, um, I'm going to go ahead and close out the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Anybody have any comments? No? Nothing? You guys have any questions? Yeah? No?
Yeah, I have one. I have a question. So like, are y'all using metal for like the pillars on like one side of the blueprint? Because like it shows like three pillars on learned buildings.
The exterior of the building will be covered in these panels, which is metal on one side, foam on the inside, and metal on the inside. So you will not be seeing, um, really pillars of any kind.
Right.
No? Okay. All right. Um, let's go ahead and we can recommend, uh, the recommendation was from this plan, the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve, correct, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and adjourn the hearing at this time. It was the second hearing, public hearing, that was held. There was one held that the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, we have met the state requirements, um, holding two public hearings. It was advertised properly. And so at this point, I would recommend that we go ahead and put this on the agenda for the next meeting on the day we make a decision on this. Okay. And so we will go ahead and make a decision and go on the next time. All right. So we're getting into the regular meeting now, and we're looking at the next thing, which is agenda approval. And is there a motion to approve the agenda? So, forgive me, I need to take something off. Okay, I made you guys all aware of that.
Yes.
We're going to take out the old business, Magnolia Springs change order. Like I said, we're going ahead and thought about that, and I'm meeting on the eighth of August. Okay. Now is there a motion? Would you like to amend your motion?
I would like to, um, I don't know if you're on, it is my honor to be up here with you, but yes, I would like to amend my agenda approval motion to include removing item one from old business, Magnolia Springs change.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous? I don't get to vote. Do you vote unanimous? Yes. I don't get to vote. I'm only a type right now. That's all I get to do. Okay. We'll go on to the next one, which is, um, the Diamond, it's not Diamond Creek anymore, but it's Stone Haven. Um, they are coming in to get their site plan, um, approved. And Mr. Criswell.
That's right.
Is here to do a presentation for everybody. And then, um, you will talk with Joe afterwards to make sure that everything has been addressed.
If this thing falls, y'all have to, I've been too hard. I've never used this thing, and, uh, it has got a little lean to it. I wanted to set it up where y'all could see.
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 That's like, we're all a little crooked.
Yeah. The, uh, the project is located on Old Eighty-One Highway in between, uh, that Jersey Wallo Grove Road and at Eighty-One there. It's on a little side street of Old Eighty-One Highway. Uh, the original design was around ninety-five lots, I believe. It's, it's down to eighty-five now. We have reduced those for various reasons, uh, rock, stuff like that. We've had to reduce usable soils for something. Um, so what we did is we made the rec area larger. Um, there'll be a pretty substantial buffer behind the rec area. It'll be a gated community, so be, be gated, uh, pickleball courts, uh, pool, playground, that type of stuff.
A junior Olympic sized pool.
That, that's correct. Yes, ma'am, a junior Olympic sized pool. It's going to be, the, I would say the community layout is very similar to Spring Creek over on Youth Center Road, close to Highway Seventy-Eight. Um, I don't think, I'm not sure we'll do the same house product as Spring Creek, but the community layout itself of gated with rec area, it will be similar to Spring Creek.
Right.
Um, the house product, I would compare it to, um, Red Oak Ridge and Lugano that we've done, or, um, over in Jersey. We, we built some road lots over on Alcoa Station Road, I believe, comparable to, to those homes, which are around twenty-two hundred to twenty-four hundred square feet.
Do you know what the estimated, uh, getting going on building and whatnot is?
So, um, if we could get started this year, say we get started developing, uh, say we get started clearing trees, breaking ground this summer, just say it's around winter July. It would take a year to develop, and then we'd start building. So say, if we start developing this summer in July, it will be July twenty twenty-six when the first home is built. And then it's going to take a little while to build a few homes to get residents. So you're not really looking at many residents until December, probably, uh, twenty twenty-six, really.
What about the amenities package? I know there's always concern about amenities.
Can we, can we back up?
Sure.
We're P S right now. That's important here. All right. You said if you start in July, that you just start building the homes then in July of twenty-six?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So that's not your finish date?
That, that's correct.
That is what you're finding. Thank you.
Typically, development of a subdivision takes a year typically, and it varies on the size and problems you run into. Um, we do know there's rock out here, so it may even be a little bit longer. It may take fourteen months to develop. And then, you know, you have all the processes at the end, getting it signed off to take a little while sometimes.
And when you say develop, you're talking about putting in the utilities, the roads, the, the stuff like that?
Yes, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And as a building, you refers to the, the homes.
That's correct, home destruction, yes, ma'am. Yeah, development would be clearing, um, putting in the streets, the water storm, uh, no sewer, yeah, electric. I believe we're going to do gas. If there's gas available, we typically do gas. We like gas appliances.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I'm pretty familiar with the, um, project, but I haven't seen the gate yet. Do you have a rendering of what the entrance is going to look like?
Nah, I think I do towards the back. Let me, let me see. Thank you. Um, typically, Ms. Butler, which is my office, he's the vice president of council, most time he does this stuff. I've never done a presentation. I'm, I'm the first in the field. And, and so.
So we need to give you a little picture of our guy.
Yes. I'm used to, I'm used to dealing with a bunch of grouchy guys most of the time, so.
So I asked him, I grilled him about it yesterday, Chris, and he said, Mr. Criswell, I have.
I should have. And let's see, this is a, he handed me this yesterday, and he's like, all right, go, go present this. I was like, I can do it. That's the, the rec area is, but we'll flip back that. Let's see. We'll see if they have a, a scene. Yeah, here we go. Nice page. Yeah, that would be the entrance monument, and then there'll be a wall in between the gates. Um, I believe this has two incoming gates. One would be like your typical resident gate where they'd have a clicker or something like that, a gate that's open. The middle gate most likely will be a keypad for guests, and then you'll have outgoing gate. I believe is how this is laid out.
That looks a lot like the one on Youth Center, right? Is it the same?
Very similar, yes, yes, very similar Spring Creek. Even that monument kind of looks similar to the, uh, the one.
I asked a question yesterday about the gates, because if residents coming in or if you have guests, then the residents are going to, you know, let them in. How do you guys think fire trucks and police cars get in those gates? Any ideas? They, they don't have little clickers, they don't live there, and they're not going to tell the resident. I know you know that. Have you ever thought about that? You know, you have a gated community, how would you get the public safety officer in there? Any ideas? No? What does a fire truck do? What's it, what kind of noises does it make? Fire rings, or you hear that, that type of thing?
Maybe a noise?
A noise, exactly. They have, I mean, I may not, Joe, if you want to explain it.
No, you're doing great.
Okay. One of their sirens, or there's, there's something on the fire truck where they push the button, and it triggers one of the gates to automatically close then to allow them in. But that's how, so the public safety officer get in there to handle, remember, you see situations or fires or something like that. I think you want them to have full access.
Right, yeah.
Why?
So maybe like they could make it, make it make a sound, a specific sound that it sets off like a.
That's what the, what other sirens do.
Like a sound sensor, like the gate.
Yes. There's also something called a mail box that's on a lot of, uh, public facilities or buildings, and the fire trucks, the firemen have the keys to get into the box, like on the gate, they could get in, open it, and get access to getting in. Yeah.
Um, at the gates, is there a height requirement? Like, like in parking, like in parking dance, will there be a height requirement?
So the gates will be a certain height? No height requirement? Uh, I'll see if it says on this, you know, like, so these gates are almost four foot tall, so they'll roughly be a foot off of the ground and then four foot tall. So the top of the gate, you know, would be about, say, minus height. Uh, the columns will be a little bit taller than that, and the wall a little bit taller than that.
I think what he's talking about is like.
Like, is there a height that's like.
It's too tall?
Can you be too tall?
Oh, no. No. So the gates will open like this? Yeah, so it doesn't matter how, how tall your truck is.
That's why I go down. It's like the anti-bomb.
Yeah, like a barrier arm or something. No, not like a barrier arm, no. You can have a jetted up truck and load it.
Then they'll swing like a door.
Yes, ma'am, they'll swing like a door. Yep. Most of our gates do swing like doors. We've looked at doing some that slide, but then you need a lot of room on the sides. And sometimes we have topo that don't allow that. So as long as the street is kind of flat coming in, we like, like to do gates. It takes overburden off of the county, for one thing. You know, the county's not responsible for the roads then, but also that is, that is makes for a really good community, our buyer's single of it, and so just for safety reasons.
And in a gated community like this, normally, um, it's a subdivision like the Oncle or Magnolia Springs, I don't know where you guys live, if you live in a neighborhood, if it doesn't have a gate and it's within a city, then the city is responsible for repaving the roads. In a gated community like this, it will be the citizens' responsibilities to pay HOA fees, and those go into an account, and they accumulate over years so that when they need to go ahead and repave their road, the funds are there and they can just get it done.
Yep.
So it kind of takes a, takes a responsibility off the city just a little bit.
It's the storm system too. All the storm, storm grants do, that's something a lot of people don't think about it. It's, it takes burden off of the community and puts it, you know, on the actual subdivision and stuff.
Yes, sir.
How would the postman get through the gates?
That's a good question. So that, that, they have a code. So once, once after, like towards the tail end of my development, once I've got streets in, the utilities in, I meet with the postmaster. They pick where I put the mailboxes, for the most part. Sometimes we did it a little bit before, but I still have to meet with them towards the tail end of my development. They tell me, you need to push your mailbox right here for safety reasons of their driver. And so at that point, I give them a code to get in.
What about UPS and FedEx delivering on the team members and, and.
So.
How do they get in?
I both, I'm not exactly sure. It works, but I, I believe when people order stuff, there's an option to put, to put in a code, and there is a call option too. Uh, we've used some systems where we'll even call your cell phone. I don't know if we'll use Cellgate on this, unless what system's called, but you have like a Rolodex in a way, and you go through that Rolodex, and you can call an individual, and they'll call their cell phone. I can't tell you how many times I've, I've been on Rolodexes, and they've called me because my, because my name in this leaves them one of the first ones, so.
Wow. One other question. Then.
How do they like create something to make it signal one of the post offices or like the thing?
What were talking about earlier, how they create that for the fire truck? I really have no idea. Um, I'm not part of like the manufacturing, but it's going to be something to do with frequencies, you know, some kind of electronic box that gets, appears a frequency and triggers the mechanics inside the box to open. I'm not really sure.
Kind of like your garage door opener, I think.
Something, yeah, something like that, yeah. Yeah, instead of electronic pulse, it goes off of a, a frequency system, you know, off of both the same.
How does it signal it?
It's quiet, just like the garage.
It's kind of like, like Wi-Fi, like internet, you know, having internet, like that.
And that's.
Yeah. Which, yeah, we do as provider, and he's getting, that's, that's part of it.
All right, let's do one more question.
Okay, so, um, is there a, like, are there different types of material that you make the gate sound of, or is it, or is it the same, I have some material, somebody makes a gate. What material is that?
So most of the time, the gate is self-esteem. Like this will look like wood, like it looks like wood there. And we've looked at doing wood panels, we just worry about them rotting. You know, if you'll see some gates that are steel with wood panels, we worry about them, you know, deteriorating, being inverted for the community, but also we worry about them becoming cell panels, you know, like the wind pushing on them and causing damage. So a lot of times, this is a steel frame, and you use steel because if someone does run into it, you don't want absolutely get destroyed. You could use aluminum, and it is better on the operators, but, you know, they get destroyed. Steel can take a little bump and still be okay.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Shh. Now.
The top lot includes what?
It would be swings, and then, uh, it'd be a slide, like, um, I'm trying to think what to compare it to. Um, like there would be something you can climb up, not necessarily monkey bars, like a little ladder, probably, uh, like a slide or two, just a typical little, the one at Spring Creek, you're more open or right there, it's probably even similar to that.
Is that fenced in? That's hot lot, is it fenced?
The top lot is not fenced in. We, uh, we fence in the pool itself, but the cabana, we don't, just, uh, just the football. And we, we're starting fencing in or using access control on our pickleball courts too. So you'll have a key card, you know, scanable thing, the gate will open, you can get into the pool, and the same thing for our pickleball courts. We're starting to do that as well.
I wanted to talk to you guys.
Also, um, when we were talking, man, he mentioned from the parking lot down to the pool, it is a little, um, decline, and there's actual stairs that go from the parking lot to the pool. I thought that was a nice little feature, just a really.
Do you have handicap access?
Of course, yes. Yes, we have to meet ADA standards, that's, that's correct. Um, like a lot of times, the handicap ramp, it will go around and then more of a direct access, few steps.
And he said that, um, amenities would be started at the same time as the first house? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
And the pool would be finished in a, um, in a timeframe that is like, makes sense seasonal, right?
That's correct. Um, for like Spring Creek, there was probably twelve residents in there that had moved in and they'll finally get the swing on coming more. We've been working on it all winter, and they've been living there, but for the pool to open up, you know, it's, as soon as the first opening of it, you know, it all varies, like say, uh, say we start building houses in July, and there is a resident in July and August already. We're, we're probably not going to be ready by then, and maybe six more months, and we just try to get it ready as soon as we can. We don't want thirty people living in there griping to us about why they don't have a pool, but they're paying H O A dues. So we do try and avoid that stuff.
Yeah. There any questions? Council, any questions?
Um, it would be back in front, but your ingress and egress. I know there was discussion about whether or not you would have more than one outlet for the residents. Do you have like an emergency secondary?
No, it is just one entrance. I believe, um.
And, and that's going to come out on Old Eighty-One ultimately?
That's correct, yes, ma'am, on Old Eighty-One, that's correct. I, I do notice.
Your gate will be up closer to the homes, because that's just a smaller strip that comes down.
Yes, here, we can, we can flip back to that, because it is real, there's another community over here.
Right.
Downstreet, it's the, but it does not tie in.
Okay.
That is really close, like there, there may be some homes backing up, but we do not tie into that, that community over here. This is the, the entrance right around from, uh, Old Eighty-One.
And y'all are making a, um, temporary driveway for the homeowner who also will be in the community, but not part of the community.
That's correct, yeah. It's kind of a, kind of a tricky situation, yeah. And then we'll even have to give them gate access, you know, we'll have to give them a code and treat them like a resident in a way. It's a very unique situation, um, because, yeah, I think right now their driveway is our street right now, so, yeah. We'll have to create them a new driveway for a little while.
Nice.
I did notice that it is just two gates. I was thinking like, uh, I was thinking of three, like Spring Creek has two entrances, you know, side by side, one for resident, one for guest. This one is just, this, this one single coming in and one single leaving, I noticed. So, yeah. And I'm going to break all this through while I have it. It's time to record and lay out, um, the top lot, fencing in, that's a good idea, like the one, like in Good Hope, I'm rather dispensed then, I've noticed, but we have not fenced them in yet. I'm rather dispensed in, I've noticed, but we have not fenced them in yet. That isn't good, though.
It's good way to ground.
Yeah, to protect them, like keep them there, yes. And then you go on pickleball courts to the right. But and this is the, the conveyance. See, somewhere. We're back. Yeah, that's, that's what our cabana looks like. Um, and what it is, is just two bathrooms and then the two utility rooms, and then there's a cover area. That's the bottom.
And they'll be putting in furniture, but there will be no interior building we use.
That's correct, just bathrooms. Yeah, with a shower.
Any other questions?
There's a good head. Was there a, I don't know, like a community building or something that's gonna be a part of this?
No, ma'am. It would just, just be that cabana. That's it.
That will see.
Like if they have HOA meetings, a lot of times they'll get up under that cabana. That's typically what they do.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You did a great job. Thank you for entertaining all of our questions.
No problem.
Joe, would you share with us, um, if everything has been addressed that you had and we had concerns with?
Sure. Um, just to give counsel and hand uh, the, our audience and guests, uh, the subdivision's gone through one permitting process, land service, or land service process. We requested that the, and I think it was always the last plan is the amenities are being permitted separately. However, we've also learned from our experience at other developments that they'll pull a separate permit for this, and based on the conversations that you've had, they will pull it at some point, probably when they do start their development. But we're gonna have it permitted separately. It'll go through its own, it'll, it went through its own review. So, uh, a couple things to point out, um, regarding, also to point out that there's an existing cemetery on the side, and it's um, it's been designated as open space. It's across the street from the existing house. Um, so there may be some provincial consideration now, family members and descendants wanting to access the cemetery, but the plans do show access easements and a gate around the cemetery. It's between lots eighty, if I write that lot eighty-five. But we commented on that during our review. Um, but just to back, just to give you all, um, the uh, plans had to be reviewed by Walton County Water, Walton County, uh, Peabody, Walton County Fire, Georgia Soil and Water Commission, and they, I know they had some challenges with that. Um, and we did the engineering review on it, and then before we did, and then with this, then this council was asked for this particular phase, which is actually very helpful for you all to get it before they would be eligible to obtain a permit. So for the subdivision of the amenity area, to the best of my knowledge, they have obtained all approvals that's necessary to get, to be eligible to get a permit. The last step was this meeting or the, the voting meeting in the eighth. If y'all approve it, say, then then they could then submit um, and request a permit. And we would do a permit package that would include all the agency approvals. Um, I couldn't find one for the amenity area today, so I'll need to create that one, and I'll just need to refresh it. We did one for um, the subdivision, but they, they had some struggles with EPD on how to, and that added a couple of months to their um permitting cycle, but they've gotten all that approved, and I've had several conversations with them to that effect. And I did want to point, other thing I want to point out is they came up during the, the sewer barriers discussions. If they are going to do a little bit of road work down in Walton, near the Jersey Road, Old Highway eighty-one, they're going to widen the turn radius, so if you're coming down Lowway, you want to go right, get about eighty-one where the store is, they're gonna, they're gonna improve that to make that turning move easier. And I think they had conversations with John Holland about that as well.
They did, yeah.
Um, so that's part of their, that will be included in their development work that Mr. Chris will discuss.
Um, Joe, let me clear, clarify on that. The, where they're widening it, separate goes to the Jersey Walnut Grove.
Yes, it's hard, it's this, it's hard.
Because Old eighty-one also comes back out.
Now, that's, now, we, we, we had this, this one right here. We had that very discussion, and I think the consensus was that's on DOT right away, and you get into the whole additional level of.
Right.
Of um.
That's why I wanted to clarify what it was.
So, I mean, this, this is a public street. To best of my knowledge, you can go either way to access, and that came up during the, you know, some of the discussions, but we felt like if I were living here, I'd go this way because that's a better road. And it comes out at a, you've got a ninety-degree intersection if you want to go left or right, and if you want to go to the store, you're right in there, you go like home. So that's why we felt that it would be, if that improved there, so it's not as quiet. If you want to go right, you had a little bit, you could turn that one. If you were gonna go left, if you want to go down the other way, you'd be able to make a left and go, so. I just wanted to look, make y'all aware that that was part of the construction plans.
Any other questions?
And I don't know anything more about gates than anyone either. Those are good questions. Uh, I'm gonna have to appropriate this idea in my city next year to have some review from we need to come and say, that's pretty cool.
I ask you a question.
Mr. Walter is also the mayor. That'd be lovely.
Free homes benefits, once this construction starts, as the gentleman talked about, there'll be people from the city and their consultants that will go out and monitor the construction, make sure they're following the plans, and they're doing, they're building it per the plan, um, just so that when it does get finished, because they'll have to come back and say, hey, we want to, we want to plat the subdivision so we can start selling lots. And at that point, we will have a conversation with the same people about is everything done properly? You got all your inspections done? You have to do bonds, you have to make, you have to make sure all your storm ponds are in place and correct and functioning. So that way, um, the reason that's done, it's a lot of older developments in towns like this, there was no process, so the city didn't really have any way of going in except having to find, dig in their piggy banks to go fix them. This way, there's, there are things to help control water and make sure, so, it's all, and then the water, there's sufficient water pressure, all that good stuff. So in my opinion, I mean, based on our opinions, mayor and council, they should be ready for permitting, pending a positive vote at your next business meeting, so I would ask you to place that on your agenda from May the eighth. And I will make sure that you all have additional documentation that just, uh, and for, I can, I sent you the information I had about ours part, but I will make sure that you have the the draft and the permits hacking for both.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Um, at this meeting, we're gonna work with you guys. We discuss things, we listen to presentations. At the next meeting, I may be, be both on things. That way, we can get all of our discussion and questions out of the way, and at the next meeting, a council meeting rather than a board session, we go ahead and make decisions about some of these things. All right, thanks, Joe. So what we're gonna do next, we have one more thing to go, and that's the ballot for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six election, the GMA with district five officers. It was part of that group that did the nominating or the, yeah, the not, not the nominating, but we, we reviewed all the affectations and whatnot. And I think we have, we have on there. We have Kurt Ward, Mayor of Reston, Amanda Willis, Mayor of Burton of Carlton, John Howard, Mayor of Monroe, and Daniel Graves, the Mayor of Elberton, and those are the current officers. Yeah. If your city in favor of the nominees for positions of president, for a vice president, second vice president, and third vice president. Those are, um, Mayor of Elberton, Dan Langgraves, is the, the newly recommended, um, voted upon by the committee, um, officer. Um, and he actually is very involved um in GMA and um his cities. Um, and one of the requirements is that you are willing to be the voice of GMA and get the word out to all of the other um cities in your district. And he wanted to be considered. There were a couple other ones who were considered. He was a very tight race, but he was the one who put him on the top, and that's who we are discussing. And so this is the ballot. It is my thought, um, after interviewing them all, that you can go with it. This isn't something that has to have the, um, if we have to have a full vote on this?
You will have to have a vote on it.
At the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and add this ballot also um to the next agenda, and we'll have a vote on it. And everybody got a copy of this, right? It was sent to everybody by Sherry. And if you have any questions, you know, go ahead and research and uh, check on Mr. Graves. He's a well-spoken um, involved mayor, who's, he's really uh, quite interesting to talk to. His city is amazing. Um, they did lots of planning, as you can see, and now they have very uh, full coffers to do whatever they need, lots of money to do what they can do. Um, okay. And that is the last thing on our agenda. Um, and I'm gonna do something I have not done in a year and four months. I have never used this thing, ever. So I thought tonight would be an appropriate time to go ahead and um call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. And then I will ask for a second, and then we hold a vote. Would someone like to call for a motion?
I have a question before we adjourn the meeting.
Of course.
The gentleman with the gates on. What if the gate cannot work there at the back lot?
Same to top layer, it's kind of timeless, um, and it's not the, so if some malfunctions on the gates, they actually that they, they won't stay closed. If the gates malfunction, they'll, they'll open automatically. And uh, and then the residents start calling us, and they're like, hey, our gates aren't working, come over and fix them. And so that's a, and the malfunction is usually not closed. It's usually open.
Good question. We have a question. Do you have a question in the audience? Who do we have a question in the audience from?
I have a quick question about the neighborhood. What school district would it be?
Walnut Grove.
Walnut Grove Elementary. And it's how many homes?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
Yes.
All right, no, we teach at Walnut Grove Elementary, so for a wondering. There's more of them. Yeah, that's not all of them. Yeah, I've seen some more around.
Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Counsel?
I'm thinking about adjourn the meeting.
There's a motion? There's a second? I'll second that motion. All in favor?
All in favor.
As you wish. I'm unanimous. We're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Here you go. Amored, I have the loss.